I'd like to call the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, Wall City Council meeting to order. And Carolyn, will you please call the roll?
Welsh?
Here.
Morgan? Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a call.
Okay, thank you. Let's stand and say, I'd like to believe. Mike, will you read it for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any order of business or emergencies, Carolyn?
No, there is not.
Is there any attendance on Zoom?
No.
Would I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Kelly's moved.
Second.
And seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With that, I'd like to welcome a deputy to the podium for the police report.
Give me your one. Um, don't have a lot to report for June. It was pretty quiet. However, I do want to mention the wall celebration went much better this year. So we were able to get pretty much everybody out of the bar by two, and the streets cleaned both nice by two thirty. A couple hiccups. Everything, everything went pretty well, so.
And how many deputies did you have here with the, with you?
Uh, I think Friday we had five and then Saturday we had four. Maybe five, because I think Carrie came on for a few hours and helped out too. So I think five is nine, actually. It really worked. And then we were here till three. There was three of us at least each night here till three. Like I said, I would.
The coverage was great and it was awesome to see you at the rodeo and the gentleman also even helped with the parking. So that was very much appreciated. So
Excellent.
Thank you for being on top of it.
You're welcome. And then just one more thing. Uh, we got a rally schedule. We're starting to make those plans now. I'm doing the schedule. And just so you know, we'll have some extra bodies here in time. Some extra shifts. They're their faces of extra shifts. So, um, just so you know, it's a better coverage.
Okay.
Any questions? Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Good night. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare at this time? Seeing none, do I have a, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes on the budget report? As well as on-call schedule, the ambulance, district financials, well, course, water usage, sales tax, and the billing permits for Seth Pomerick and Beth Amyard.
We're.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the city of Wall and fire department, library, and cemetery claims. Would I have a motion to approve those claims which are moving around the table at this point, uh, for signatures?
A motion.
Okay, Dan has moved and Kelly has seconded, uh, the motion to approve the claims. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us then to our first speaker, Tim Hartman, K L J, to visit with us, and he has previously handed out a document, uh, in regard. So is that your place in regard to what he will be speaking about?
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here this evening. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. I guess a couple of action items on our Echo Valley subdivision project, and then just an update on a few other items that we're going to bring up as well. So, uh, Echo Valley, I guess, to start with the big one, we do have construction ongoing out there. Um, contractor has finished up with the main line sewer and the water connection within Stone Drive. Uh, they've been able to get out of that area where the sewer was so deep and are making a little better progress on the main line sewers still. They're kind of up around the corner and into the, the main new road of Echo Valley Drive coming down. So still working on the main line sewer, um, and they have another piece of equipment and a crew coming in next week. So they hope for that to speed up just a little bit. And then we'll move over to the water there as well. Um, we did have a progress meeting on that project today and just a couple notable things with that. They have been pushed back just a little bit on the street patch within Stone Drive. However, the road is open, just with a short gravel section through there. Um, and we just worked with the contractor to make sure we maintain that in good passing condition. So we'll maintain that until approximately the middle to end of August to get the actual asphalt patch done. Um, so with that, I guess, action items for the project tonight, we have that pay application and then a progress or a change order one, excuse me, a change order. So the pay up is just for additional work that's been completed since our last month's payout. Uh, and then the change order one, we actually briefly previously discussed, that includes a deduct for the use of some airport millings and material on a twelve-inch surface thing, but then, uh, does include the increase, if you remember some discussion about, we originally had planned for a partial patch within Stone Drive. We expanded that out, um, just to give you a better travel. So if they're better long-term product there to do a full width patch after construction. So with that, we had a net increase on that change order of thirty-nine thousand, two forty-six, uh, and then a decrease with our deduct of twenty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand for a change order grand total of fifteen, um, fifteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars for that one and then, uh, the normal payment as well. So I guess I'll leave it at that for that kind of.
Okay, so would I have a motion then for the change order for fifteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
The seconded. Any further discussion, questions, or concerns? Regarding that document for Tim? Hearing no concerns or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
You want to do the payout to?
Yes, would you like to do that pay request number three then?
Yep. So that pay request number three, like I said, is just for additional work completed from our last one. Uh, if you remember, we did pay for stored materials at the last one. Essentially just putting those materials into the ground. Um, and that pay request is for forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Hey, would I have a note then? A, a motion for the, uh, number three pay request?
So, second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Are there any questions or concerns with that? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, did you have some more that you wanted to talk about then?
If you don't mind, I'll be quick. So just a couple notes on a few other projects that we've been working on. Uh, industrial park development and lift station, still working on some finish up items there with the main thing being infiltration. Um, I don't have a, a concrete update on that tonight, except for we are still coordinating with the contractor. They're out of their busy season now and we're just trying to get them back over here. Um, we would just note that it's contractor's aware of it. We're communicating with them. He's tracking it and, uh, and also do note that we do have funds held back on that front instance and have been paid out and everything like that. So, and I just think that's worth mentioning. Uh, Fourth Avenue reconstruction, Dana was over and met with, uh, city staff and a few of you folks, elected officials here and worked through a design meeting. Uh, we've taken the changes from that design meeting. We're working on those changes and then moving towards state and railroad permitting, but the target of a fall bidding for that project. So we'll, uh, we'll keep chasing that goal.
So fall means September, October? Probably October. Yeah.
Yeah, and we just, the, the state, we're fairly familiar with those projects or those processes with permitting and things like that, railroads. Well, we'll just work to do that.
Oh, yeah.
To make sure, just with, with the track and as much like what we're doing in that area. So we'll just coordinate with those folks. Um, yes, and then finally, uh, twenty-twenty-one street improvements. We've been talking for some time about some landscaping re, uh, items remaining. Uh, we, we do have some action on one of those sites, uh, as of today with the, uh, crew there working and Garrett had graciously helped or, I guess, raised his hand to help tomorrow morning. We're gonna try to track them down and see if we can just get all that wrapped up that one of the locations too. So we're optimistic as of tonight, I would say.
That would be good to get that one.
Yes.
Off this list.
Any other question for me? It's all I have for this evening.
Any questions, Council? Seeing none. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along then to, um, Travis Hirsch, and he's with Meaden Hunt, if I understand that correctly.
Well, thank you everyone for giving the, giving me the time to speak a little bit about the project here. My, I'm Travis Hirsch, if you're, if you're not, uh, familiar with me. I, I work as the assistant project manager out at, uh, the airport for you guys with Meaden Hunt. So I want to walk through a little bit of what, uh, what we're looking at here. So I want to give you a little status update. And then we have three action items, a change order and two pay requests to get through here. So just familiar, I think it's been a little while since Meaden Hunt's came to talk to you guys, but, uh, we're working on reconstructing the runway, taxiway, a new electrical vault system and a new a whole new electrical system out in the airport with new, uh, approaches. So we began construction early in April and we made a lot of progress so far. So we've got, we've completed most of the earthwork, installing culverts, and that's about where we're at right now. I've brought a schedule here along with me to roughly give you an idea of where we're at. So we started here in April. We're about right here at the blue line and we have about this far to go, and that's going to get us through, through November. So we should be open by November here. So we're, we are on schedule still. So as for, um, the project progress so far, things have gone really well. That's not without our challenges though. So that's the first item I wanted to talk to you about here. That's change order number one. So early in April, after we started excavating out the old runway, we ran into some organic materials that were exposed underneath the runway. They're unknown at the time. They weren't discovered during our geo, geotechnical investigation. And they extended in two, two primary locations, one shortly off the runway, one underneath the existing runway actually. And they vary in depth about one to two feet. So we spent about a month, month and a half working these moisture conditioning the, the soil to see if we could get them to, get them to come to an acceptable level that we're going to pass the specifications. It turned out it wasn't going to happen because the material's unsuitable for construction. So in mid-May, we brought the geotechnical to do an investigation that confirmed that these are unsuitable materials. And it turns out using concurrents that they're unsuitable and they have organics in them. So with change order one, we're looking, or we're, we look to, uh, remove the existing unsuitable materials and fill it back, fill it with more suitable material. We're able to get that suitable material from the old runway, the millings and gravel. So we're able to source the material very cheaply on site and replace it with suitable material. So that's essential with change order number one to look in here, looking at here. Is there any discussion or questions on this?
Yeah, I, I have a question. I heard, heard about it, and I've never really heard about something like that before. So is what's wrong with the material?
What's wrong with it? So, so essentially there the, the long and short of this, there's roots and there's organics and the problem with the material is that it's, uh, you can't get compaction and it can't, it can't hit density and it can't hold holding. So when you run equipment on it, it deflects terribly, like very poorly, and that causes it to build up. If you don't have a strong foundation and you won't be able to build this foundation with this, these organics, because they're, they're flexible. There's, I wish I had a sample. I can show you. There's, there's roots and it's, it's crazy. It was underneath the, the runway. So I'm not sure, sure, uh, sure, sure of the source of that. You, you know, you almost questioned where, where that's the, the thing we're always talking on site. We're like, where did it come from? You know, and it's usually in some of the lower areas. So I don't know if it's just deposits over time or maybe it was brought in. There's a lot of theories, but no way to really know for sure. So essentially the problem with it is you can't get compaction. If we can't get compaction, we can't get, you know, we, we're not able to build up. We'll get to, we'll get to asphalt at the top and we won't even be able to get density. And our problem would be that, uh, it'll fail pretty materially. So.
Very good. Thank you.
And the total cost for that is a fifty-three thousand or?
Estimated cost for that, yep, is fifty-three thousand. So talking on, on the money side of things here, it's fifty-three thousand, but we'll have a grant funding board at ninety-five percent, ninety-five or ninety percent coming from, from the F A and five percent, seven percent coming from the state. They reviewed and approved the, the change order for the funding. So we'll, we'll find funding sources for this. That's going to amount to about twenty-six hundred dollars from the city of, of Wall.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Is there any other further questions on it? I can go into more detail if there's, if there's any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend that we, the, the, the city approves and executes change order number one or.
Can we do that right now then? I won't mess up your, your story here. Okay, so with that being, with that being said, do I have a motion then to approve the change order for fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars?
So moved.
Rick has moved.
Second.
And Dan seconded. Any other questions or concerns on that change order? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, then moves on to, I have two partial pay requests. So these are progress, uh, requests for the project. The first one ending through June twenty-second and the next one ending through July tenth. We'll start with the first one for, uh, twenty-four thousand six hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents. Essentially, this is for installing some, some culverts and some culvert removals. That's the bulk of that, that change. Or that, that partial pay request. So I guess at this time, I'd like to recommend of the council to approve a request.
Number.
So moved.
Okay, Stan has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any other questions?
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have a request number five. So this is through Ju- July tenth. So this is for some additional R C P that's been installed at, on the project and some work for it, for a total amount of two hundred and seven dollars and eighteen cent, or eight, two hundred and seven thousand, eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
And what's R C P?
Uh, reinforced concrete.
Okay.
So, yeah. Those are some storms here.
All right. To have a motion to approve the pay request number five for two hundred and seven thousand, eighteen dollars and ninety cents.
So.
It's been moved. Then, and seconded. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for the pay request number five.
All right. So I have just one last couple of comments I want to make here. So we're looking, so looking forward here, uh, to give you some foresight on some potential changes or, or issues that we might be seeing. Uh, we're still in, in the process of investigating how much earthwork we have on the site. I believe we're very close, roughly within five thousand yards. I need to get some better measurements to know for sure that, uh, we're going to have enough earthwork on site. If we need more, we'll, we'll source it and I'll bring this to the board and we'll, we'll go further with that discussion, but it's just for informational purposes now. We're also looking at a potential change order with move electric. They're proposing to install some conduit through plowing rather than trenching. This will be a discount to, uh, a D doc only and, uh, we're just making sure we get the right price for it now, that, uh, that you're getting the right dollar amounts. So so still working on that, or that's really all I have for now. So I appreciate you everyone's time.
I did have a question. How many people do you have working down here?
On, on this project?
On this project.
Right now, we have two people. Um, both of them are out of Rapid City. We have an intern. Her name's Claire Peaslee. And then we have Dalton Morgan, who was a new hire actually this week. So through the time we've had the change order or change over with a couple of people, um, coming out of Bismarck and Fargo for a couple of weeks.
So that's speaking to Meaden Hunt. What about Western Construction? How many people have they?
Oh, they average probably, they average about ten. It depends on the day. Um, they have a bunch of subcontractors helping too with, uh, fencing, et cetera, but, uh, they have approximately ten out there. So with Western Construction.
And they're usually drive in?
Yep.
But I see them at our fueling at our stations. I see them eating lunch.
Correct.
And so I just wondered how many were there. So.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few, few people coming from Rapid to, to drive in and using your facilities, contributing to the, the businesses here.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Okay, we have a visitor, Acting Director Ranger Jesse McCarty from Forest Service for some new updates. Welcome to our meeting, Jesse.
Thank you. Um, I bring three items to you guys and I want to hear your thoughts, concerns, considerations. I'll go through them. Okay? Um, I'll be brief. We have, uh, some movement on the National Grassland Visitor Center repairs. I'll let you guys know that we've completed through the contracting process on our end. It's out, it's been out for a bit. So we'll have it out for a bit for about another twenty-some days, third day total. And, uh, we should see some movement within, say, the first quarter of the fiscal year. So October, November, December. So that is encouraging. So the trailer out front, highly likely, fingers crossed, will not be there, say, before next summer. That's, that's the hope. So encouragement there. Um, second item, I had an opportunity to sign the Pinnacle's decision on Monday that, uh, kind of dispersed recreation areas south of town. But we nicknamed Pinnacles. It's right before the, uh, park entrance. Folks are probably very well aware of that. We're averaging about a hundred and thirty-some units a day visiting that area. Uh, and the decision I signed will limit that to about seventy. So we've installed some posts, preliminary, just kind of getting the first phases of this project in motion. And we're going to ask people to park within about three feet of those posts. Um, and we're going to do a soft enforcement because we don't have all of the capacity to, uh, we can kind of work through the implementation plan. The timely manner will probably be next summer before we have the full project, uh, implemented. And then it has an adaptive management measurement where, you know, we'll feel it out for a season or two and see if we need to make any sort of changes. Um, we're interested in folks' feedback, uh, as you guys, you know, hear some, uh, you know, what people are saying about it. So I'd encourage that to come to my position, which takes me to my third item. We have a permanent district ranger coming, um, August twenty-eighth. Carl will be coming from Wong. Uh, apparently he is very familiar with the area, has experience out here. So we, uh, we hope that he will be a long-term stay for the wall, because I understand it's been a, a bit of a revolving door. Uh, so that was quick, brief. What thoughts, concerns, considerations?
I just have a question on the, if you averaged a hundred and thirty, what's the reason for the reduction? Just some complaints or?
It's become unimaginable, un, unmanageable on our end. We don't have the capacity to, um, uh, turn it into a developed recreation site. I don't even have a rec staff at this point, if you work at our box.
So how will you go left regularly in there?
So we have support from our law enforcement, but they're all coming out of, you know, kind of our western area. Um, we have a zoned recreation staff that visits about every three to four weeks on the weekend. And then my staff, uh, travels to the area twice a week to kind of do vehicle counts. And then we also measure the road impact, uh, via vehicle counters. And so what we're trying to do is get into a, uh, a realm that is manageable for the long term. Uh, just as, uh, an example, on the cover page of the Pinnacle's environmental assessment, has a picture of that kind of farthest sounding turnaround area, and it was a grassy two-track. That was five years ago. So, and now there's no grass there. So we, we need to bring it into alignment with not only environmental management, but the people aspect. So far, I will say, the vast, vast majority of folks out there have been very respectful. Uh, they've not been, you know, um, leaving trash about and other items. They're, they're doing a really good job about keeping it clean and having very few issues out there. I, I have very, um, few, you know, negative comments, uh, but we're literally stacking people up in these hundred thousand dollar rigs right on the wall. You know, and it's a matter of time. We've already had two, uh, one hard side camper, one pop-up kind of tent camper go off the wall. It's a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. So.
Crazy.
It is. Um, and, and they just, they just don't quite understand, right? It's an education element. So this will be an opportunity for us to educate them. Uh, the next phase will be the kiosks and, and, um, I was shocked to learn how much kiosks cost. So we're going to have to find those funds, get those installed with the education material presented on them, maps, et cetera, the rules. Then we'll, we'll kindly encourage folks probably through the next season or so. But, uh, that's the true reason for the Pinnacle's environmental assessment.
So seriously, how do you keep them to seventy if there's a hundred and thirty going in there now?
That's a very good question, Mary. We are going to ask nicely. We've also, uh, did some research. That's, that's the way we.
So you have like posts and?
Yep.
That show like?
Yep. There's six inch round posts. You know, they're, my, uh, fire crews put out fifty-eight so far the last couple of days. I two was out there tamping in posts. Um, and we're going to put in probably another twelve or so because the Pinnacle's decision noted roughly seventy, uh, as an initial effort. We may install more later to see how this works. We just didn't want to have a, a tight density. Uh, because somebody's bound to wrap their RV around one of these posts or we know it's managed for range lands. The cows are going to rub on them, all that kind of things. We're just trying to feel it out initially since it is, um, minimally stacked. So what other?
And you did say a key thing there. This is a cattle pasture.
It is.
And how does that affect the ranchers?
So so far, the permittees have been, um, you know, buying, uh, they are a little concerned. People are harassing their cows. We did get a report of that the other day. People tend to self-police and paddle on each other. So, uh, sent out one of my staff and explained to this individual, you, you don't get to harass the cattle. This is managed for range land. And he's like, well, they may damage my, my vehicle. He said, that's the risk you take here. It's, it's a pasture. So, um, that's the storyline we've been sharing with the public, because it is not designated for recreation. Now, we are in a, beginning the phases of a forest plan revision, starting October one. That'll be year zero. There will be a four-year process at a minimum. Uh, it has been suggested that some portion of that area may be managed for recreation in the future because we are just not able to slow people down, uh, from coming to it. Every person I talked to on Wednesday and Thursday found their information for that site from a different location. Uh, they said there's YouTubers who are creating videos about it. Every single one had a different website. They all had different information. I don't have I T staff to, to manage that. So we're going to kindly ask people to, to do as we ask. If they don't, we'll order law enforcement to remove them. Uh, that'll catch, uh, wind, but we, we want compliance through request versus uh, writing a bunch of tickets because we, we don't have the staff to, um, to manage angry public who will then turn to, you know, trash and stuff. So that's our approach today. We'll see how that transitions over time. That's why we wrote an adaptive management element in this, this project. Any other thoughts, concerns, consideration with the visitor center, internal repairs, and the new Forest Service leadership show in late August? Excellent. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming. And you'll introduce Carl to us then in late August?
Uh, I will not be here to introduce Carl. I'll be going back to my unit. Uh, I'm here as a kind of stop back leadership measure, keep the wheels on the bus. Um, your guys' next meeting, it'll be about a weekend, but I have no doubt my staff will bring them. So.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone that would like to make pu- uh, public comments? There is a limit of three minutes on this, uh, comment period. Anyone today? Okay, hearing, seeing none, we will move on to the permits. We have a billing permit for Patsy Besen to construct a fence. Does this replace a fence, actually?
Yeah.
Okay, that was how I was reading it.
Was it the same material here? What's that? Same material? Yeah, I think.
Currently, they don't have a privacy net. Currently, it's, no, it's wood, but it's got a lot of distance between, you know, it's kind of supposed to be that.
Will be the same material.
Wood, because. I think it's a wood.
Only keeping rabbits out.
I think so.
The shorter ones.
Yeah.
So it's basically on the same location and just better material. So it's basically on the same location and just better materials, perhaps we could say. Okay. Is there any, uh, do I have a motion to approve the uh billing permit for the fence? For Patsy Besen? Any other questions or concern? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That brings us to our next uh billing permit. That would be for Monica Billmeyer. She is building an attached garage. She has a contractor. And it is a twenty-six by twenty-four.
Garrett, you, you review that?
Yes, it was kind of in the plans when we put my house in service, so it kind of said everything.
Thank you, George, for the approval, Dan.
Okay, Dan has moved. And Mike has seconded. Any other questions or concerns about the garage at Monica Billmeyer's address on Kelly Avenue? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, that brings us to uh putting on steel on uh for Jake Nelson at twenty-one twenty Wilsie. No, two oh five Plant Street, square yes, that's his address, sorry. Okay, well, led you straight there. Okay. So, uh, steel siding? Do you see any issues at all, Garrett?
I do not.
I think it will approve, improve the looks of that.
I just wanted to go talk to him, but I'm pretty sure that's especially siding that's on there, so make sure that he things it on.
Which house is that? I can't.
First house north of Butch and Anne Kidderman's old house.
Okay. Any other uh comments or questions about it? Would I have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Let me just have a comment. I had somebody asked me about putting in a, they want to put in a privacy fence, wanted to know if they could put in steel, you know, kind of like over here on the cactus lot. And I said, I don't know, you know, there's, they said they're starting to see more and more, it's more of a modern look, I guess. And I said, I don't even really know if we have a besides it has to be wood, you're for sure. And I looked into it, just to I thought something said that, like a certain percentage of, usually had to be, that, but that was instead of a slab wood.
Like a windbreak?
Or, you know, and I think they put more modern look to it, you know, a lot less maintenance. So, and it's a lot cheaper, I guess. A lot. Well, it's something we can look into, I guess, and see.
All right, so that brings us then to the site permits. We um have a request for willing to wall. Um, and in two, it appears in two locations. She's also attached some pictures of what they look like.
So typically banners can be approved by the the banner committee, but there's a two-week timeframe and she's asking the true root is why.
So you don't want it up a little longer.
Um, the celebration rodeo and committee have banners approved through the committee, but that's the reason why it's on there, it's of the three-time frame disaster.
So with that being said, is there a motion to approve this longer banner? It's been moved. And Kelly seconded. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay, for the sign permit. Okay, then we have a stay wall. They are um asking for a double-sided, two foot by five foot sign. And it must be in reference to the food truck.
Aren't they already up? Or is this different?
Um, yeah, they would be.
So is there a motion to approve? And there's a second. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to an out west quilts. And this is a single-sided, thirty-six by seventy-two. Well, single-sided is the same as the north's job, but then she says it's double-sided. Do we know for sure? Okay, two sides.
Two signs.
Okay. One is single-sided and the other one's double-sided. Okay.
The single-sided one, I believe she will be moving in and out. She just wants people to know she's open. Or whatever, so she'll be placing it out in the front, is how I understood her. Now maybe she's wrote the request.
Yeah, it doesn't say a whole lot.
Is it gonna be out by the main street, you think?
Looks like maybe, yeah. So by the, the W in the west, yeah.
I think it's more like a flame type thing, you know, that we have at the coffee shop and Nana's work in town.
Do I have a motion to approve this then? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, then we have a um fourth one. It's been submitted. And this is uh three by five. And where does this one want to be located at?
I included the email on it, but um wants to put it on the fence on Main Street, in front of the cactus.
It'd be where?
Where the cactus front is.
Where would the barbecue be? Oh, we're advertising, we're down there.
I thought we weren't gonna allow. We thought we didn't put the scavenger journey on there for people to keep it out for city only.
I, I, I think that's exactly what we should continue to do.
Like we talked last time, how do you start a stall?
What was that, Stephanie?
Hey, would I have a motion then to deny this uh application?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to deny uh the application uh for the barbecue side. Any other questions or concerns?
So is there a sign? Did he have a sign where his barbecue place was now?
Well, he has a, like, he has a sign on the food truck or whatever it goes, with his barbecue, but it doesn't say butts and crabs. No, he doesn't have that sign.
Well, he has indicated the location he wanted it was five and eighteen Main Street, and we are denying this sign permit for that location. If he'd like to come back and talk to us about a different location, I guess he'd be welcome to do that. Would you agree?
I would agree. I, I just thought maybe I missed something that there was.
Okay, okay. So where was I? Have we moved and seconded that? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, okay. All right. That brings us then to item sixteen. Would you like to talk about that?
Yes, so these are the banner permits that I spoke about that the rodeo squad and the celebration committee um submitted. And they were approved by the banner committee. Um, they are asking for the fees to be waived.
Most of them.
Okay, Stan is moved. And Kelly has seconded to waive the fees for the celebration uh and rodeo banners. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to, do we have any uh bids for the mower?
We do. We have. Well, this one was just given to somebody and he sent to his mower. It doesn't specify that, but I would assume as well. So I have one from Jason Paulson for two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. And I have from Branch here, a bid of two thousand. And from Doug Doll, I have a bid of thirty-five hundred. And from Wayne Shaw, I have a bid of twenty-five hundred. Like Doug Doll has the high bid.
Okay, okay, so would I have a mo- would I have a motion then to accept the bid of thirty-five hundred dollars from Doug Doll for the surplus mower? And Stan has seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item eighteen. I, IP hay bid for the second cutting.
I have two of them.
One of the chambers, a letter one.
I need to just keep it in here, because I don't ever remember to bring it. Um, I have a bid from Tracy Trask for six thousand two hundred and ten. And I have a bid from Marty Williams for six thousand seven hundred.
And the others? Okay. Do you have a motion then to approve the high bid of sixty-seven hundred dollars? Okay, Stan has moved and Kelly has seconded. A bid of sixty-seven hundred dollars for Marty Williams for the second cutting of the IP bid, IP. Okay, with that being said, the chamber report, side number nineteen.
Hello. Okay, um, first I just wanted to say thank you to the city for everything that you guys do and everything that you allow during celebration. Because without your cooperation, it would be absolutely impossible to get all of that, all those moving parts worked together and come up with what we came up with. So um, it was a fun weekend and we had gorgeous weather. It was cold some of those nights and Garrett and his guys must have done an awesome job spraying because the mosquitoes, you barely saw them, so. Um, my next item is Teresa from the Badlands Observatory. Um, she'd like to invite um city council members, chamber board members, uh economic development, economic development board members, that's a tough one tonight. Um, out on August nineteenth at nine thirty for a viewing. She said that um the presentation would be two and a half hours long. And um Saturn and Jupiter are very visible during this time of the year, so she said it would be a great time to come and it's limited to fifteen people, so it's, it's not a situation where unfortunately you can't bring, you know, it would just be you coming out. And if you would like to um, to come, let me know, and I'll get you on the list. And like I said, that's gonna be August nineteenth at nine thirty.
At night?
Yeah, way past my bedtime, but it, it, we're gonna, you mean, we're gonna keep each other awake, Mary. Um, I think Kelly, I've already got you on my list to go, okay? Um, and then my next item is I, oh, we just, um, I just got a call today that our motel cards are printed up, so just in case, um you guys wanna see those, they're gonna look like this. They're gonna go in all of our motel rooms and I think we're even gonna maybe put them in restaurants and a little placard and it has our QR code on it that we just got developed. And so if you start seeing these around, that's what that is. And it goes to our website and shows um events, places to eat, places to shop, places to stay. So um, yeah, and if you can think of anything else that we need to have included in that, just, just let me know. And then um, we're also working on ways to welcome bikers to wall for during the rally, since we are not hosting um the wall crawl anymore. We wanna make sure that they know that we appreciate them being here. So we're gonna be getting some banners printed up. Um, Annie, she um came up with a really neat one that will hopefully go over Main Street and be a little bit bigger. Not, not bigger, but taller, I guess I should say, than the one that we had up um during six oh five days. So it's a little bit, that one looked a little puny up there. So we're hoping to have one that, that's a little cooler. And um and then we're also, I'm working with uh Vicki down at Harley, and we're going to be giving away free bottled water with a banner out and just try to make sure that, you know, they know that we're happy that they're here and spending their money here, for sure. And then uh for the community center, we're still hiring the maintenance position. So if you guys know of anybody that might be interested, we'd sure love to get that filled and, and send them my way and we'll hopefully get somebody in there. And then also the Wall City Pool is gonna be closed the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth because we got, just, we're just short-staffed for, for those days. Um, we lost Mercedes to med school, so she just left a few weeks ago, and we're down to seven lifeguards. We did reach out to Philip and we had one guard that was open to hours, but I don't, I don't think that they've picked up much. So they will be closed and um, I'm gonna be working on some policy changes with the pool and the lifeguards. So if you guys have any suggestions, and this will be for next year. So if you have any ideas, please let me know so that we can get all of that included and maybe just hopefully have everything just run a little bit smoother than, you know, than it has. No, no, it's been great, but just can always make it better. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Is there another section of swimming lessons coming up?
Yes, so next, there's two more sessions. Um, next, starting the week of the seventeenth, um, we've got I think the last time I checked, I think we might have one spot open in level one, and other than that, all of those um sessions are full. And then uh the week of the twenty-fourth, we do have some openings, I think, in most levels. We actually opened up um another level three because we had so many kids still wanting to get in. So we do have some openings there, so.
Fantastic.
Yeah, okay, anything else?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, economic development. Kendall.
Hi everyone, I think I know most of you, but just in case, I'm Kendall Nelson and get to be the economic development director now. Um, I served on the board since twenty twenty-one, I was the vice president in twenty twenty-two and I guess I get to run the show. Um, I had my first Rushmore Regional Economic Development meeting in Rapid City on the sixth. I met the different directors from all the different towns and it was neat to learn about. Some of the other projects that are going on in our surrounding communities and everything. Um, I've been working on doing the A lunches again for harvest. That was something that went really well last year. So we're just trying to kind of nail down when harvest is going to be, which is kind of difficult with the rain and everything, but. Um, been working with Jerry on that and everything, so hopefully be able to lock that in next week when we're gonna do it and then um. Zach Kaufman is actually gonna be the one providing the lunches through his weekend bacon food truck, so keeping it local and everything um. May, we had our first board meeting that I got to direct on the twenty-eighth and our next one is on the twenty-seventh. And I don't really have a lot for you, just kind of I'm getting in here, but really appreciative of the job and I I appreciate it, so. Well, I have, I guess.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, item number twenty-one, attorney report.
I don't have a report on the third question.
I have a question. You know. In the past, our comprehensive plan was so old and. Not really very well vetted that it didn't count. And then our zoning ordinances, we had the ag land. Uh, zoning in which really wasn't a listed zoning, but now we have a new comprehensive plan that has. Ag land zoning in it and then and then we put that in our uh. In our ordinances for zoning, so are they viable? Is there anything else we have to do? To make sure they're in place?
Yes, um. We have discussed, um, we have discussed actually redoing the passage of the zoning ordinance. Because although it's fixed now with regard to. The egg designation within the the zoning ordinance, which was a problem for us, um. We suspect that for purposes of the law's litigation, if they lose the Supreme Court's. Um, battle, they will come back and challenge the passage of the actual zoning ordinance in the eighties. And so um we have discussed, Kent and I have discussed. Um, that it's probably prudent that we. Based on any changes from the comprehensive plan, um, we just kind of reaffirm. And and do a modern day record that fully complies with all notices and everything because. We did do the research and it was on microfilm at the. Pure, I don't know what Doug looked at it, it took hours and he couldn't find a lot of. Information about proof that our zoning ordinance was adequately passed. And not that it's our burden, if they're gonna challenge our zoning ordinance, they have to prove that it was. Um, somehow faulty or or there was a defect in the passage for zoning ordinance, so. Uh, instead of rolling the dice, we have discussed that we should. Uh, maybe stack up any new things that might be good to have in our. Our zoning ordinance based on the new comprehensive plan and then just re-pass the zoning one.
Well, I I I think we should do that sooner than later.
Okay.
So could you tell me kind of where where are we at on the court case? I haven't heard anything. There's nothing new, right?
Correct.
We're waiting for a loss response.
Correct.
Well, and they have four, they had forty-five days to do that.
Correct.
And we haven't heard anything.
Correct.
And when we do hear something, then remind me what's what happens next?
Then we have thirty days to submit our reply. And um we will likely, um, I mean, at this point in time. You know, we pretty much know the things that we've cut out of our, because of the ten thousand word limit. So the things that we cut out of our actual appellate brief. Um, we have just kind of, we made critical decisions about what. Was absolutely imperative to have in that front brief and then what could. Go into the reply brief if we have room for it, so once we get love's response brief. Um, we will know how much of our word limit we need to devote to rebuttal. And how much we can use to get some of those points in that we had to cut out of our initial brief.
So their reply is due kind of toward the end of this month, probably. Is that what, do you know the specific date?
Um, with the extension, I believe it's August. Um. I didn't write it down, but uh.
They applied for an extension?
No, we, but we did and and that standard.
Oh, okay.
And um.
They can do the same thing.
Yeah, uh you don't even have to do a motion or anything. It's just, you just. Um, basically petition the clerk's office, hey, can we get the standard's fifteen day extension? And we got it and so Ron Carson said it's like. Formula, even if we hadn't asked for it, they probably wouldn't anyways, so um. That that adds fifteen days too, so I can't remember exactly what the date is now, the fifteen days added, but it he said it's almost certainty. That they'll take the extra fifteen days as well.
So that'd probably push it to the. Tenth of August.
Something like that, yeah, it it's like seventh or tenth.
So then we go another thirty days, so. Then we're into mid-September?
Yeah.
Then.
Which is, you know, pretty much on um on course. For what we expected, that considering that we asked for oral arguments and considering the profile. Um, and the level of impact that the issues in our litigation. Have on potentially every municipality in the state. Um, it's very likely that we will be on for oral argument at the law school in October.
Well, uh and then my question is, and I, you know, I visited with. Uh Carolyn earlier today and I know we're gonna work on our zoning ordinances, who who's gonna help us? You know, but probably after the first of the year, but I think what we have now, our comprehensive plan. And our zone zoning ordinances that we've readopted need to be certified some way. So that they're in place, as best as we can do before we go through the thing after the first year.
Yeah, and. You know, oral argument, even if we're on in October, um, which Ron, with his experience thinks that we will be. But even if we are on for oral argument in October, i- it could be up to a year. And I shouldn't say up to, I've seen it take longer than that, but. Um, given the level of visibility of of the issues in our litigation, I would say. You know, I would like to believe it's less than a year. Ron said maybe it will be less than a year, but yes. I would say the sooner we uh fix any glitches and kind of make our zoning ordinance ironclad, the better.
Cause it's about fourteen, they average is usually about fourteen to sixteen months down the road. Which I think that kind of fits into the schedule that we're working on uh with Black Hills. Um, council, so I think that it. All of that is. Will come into being and and fit that timeframe. It looks to me like we've got a ton of time, so.
So you're suggesting what?
That we go ahead, continue with the work that we're doing with Black Hills. Uh, council and come back with the ordinances and and adopt them all at one time, so. Or as we move along with that process, so.
And so what is your estimated timeframe for completion of the Black Hills Council's work?
Well, that conversation is is ongoing at this point and it fits, we need to fit their schedule and. So.
Okay, but.
But it fits within this, this sixteen months. Uh, we're well into twenty twenty-four before all this is gonna come back.
So, but I I just need clarification because Councilman Houston just said he'd like to. Get maybe some.
Yeah, I I'm kind of, I'm kind of uncomfortable. Cause the last time, you know, our comprehensive plan didn't count or in our zoning. Uh, was not effective because we used egg zone zoning, but it wasn't in our ordinance, so we put it in our ordinance. I think we need a Scott, a stopgap measure now in place. And then do the stuff after the first year, but I think we should recertify whatever we gotta do. Uh, because I, we have a a good comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinances uh uh match that. I think that should be officially adopted, so uh it's it's uh. So we don't go through what we did the last time. And then I think o- 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 of course, it it sure, we we got, we've. Got Black Hills Council. That'll be coming up and do that too, but I don't think it would take that much to uh certify our present zoning ordinance.
So, okay, just cause I am late to this game, totally help me understand what. Um, what that would do for us then, the ordinance, what, how does that help us to get in place?
Well, I I would, I would defer to Stephanie.
I I would say, you know, um, without knowing with certainty, when uh the next phase of. Love's litigation will kick off after we get a Supreme Court opinion. Without knowing exactly when we'll get the Supreme Court opinion, uh, we've already identified that is a weakness. That we expect loves will come back and target. Uh, we we expect that that is their Achilles heel, uh, if they lose. Uh, at the Supreme Court, so I I agree, um, you know, I I've. Pretty much been waiting on the Black Hills Council just because I haven't known the timeframe and. We do have some time, but I would also say. We pretty much expect that that's where loves is going to target their um their next move if they lose.
Well, we, I assume we wanna be, do what Rick is talking about and do what Carolyn's talking about. Even if love wasn't in the picture, I would assume we want all that certified, so if something else happened down the road that we.
Exactly.
In total compliance.
Yeah, it it's not just about the love's litigation, it it's.
It's something that needs to be done and I think that's why we're addressing it.
And and what will Black Hills Council actually do, just?
They're gonna be reviewing it to make sure that we're legal with everything that we currently have and.
Kind of put it in clear form.
Right.
I see.
So there really isn't a problem if we if we would adopt the ordinance. And put it in and then they reviewed it, so if we would get it in now, it's it's, that's not a problem. You know, we can always add.
About just taking our current ordinance?
No.
No, the 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 egg specification.
We have that in, we did approve that.
Well, so so yeah, we we did, we did recognize, we we did recognize egg as a. A zoning designation within the city zoning ordinance, but yeah, I think we would make um. Maybe some changes Kent and I would look through and see if there's stuff just up front that we would. Um, think needed to be changed. I think Carolyn did give at one point in time with some things. And and I listed things Kent has, um, so we probably would make some changes. Um, but the biggest thing would be to basically ratify. The proper passage of our zoning ordinance, so it cannot be said. Moving forward that there is any doubt that we have a zoning ordinance in place.
And that last thing you said, I think that's what we need to do now.
But I I really did think that we already did this one.
Well, we we did, but there's, it seems like there's another step that we need to take.
All all we did was recognize egg designation designation within the city's current zoning ordinance. We did not go back and re-pass the zoning ordinance. It is expected that love's next move will be to challenge appropriate and adequate. Notice, passage, public hearing, et cetera, of the city of all zoning ordinance if they lose. And if there is a chance that that could happen from them, there is a chance it could happen from anyone. So the point would be to um redo. The process in the twenty-first century, so there is no question that the city's zoning ordinance was properly passed.
And and you wanna just address this specific. Ordinance, you're not worried about our total fixture?
I'm talking about the zoning ordinance in its entirety.
All all those part of zoning. You're basically talking about relooking at it and even though we've kind of done it, we need to. Recertify it and then.
And do we have, do we have to advertise?
Yep, we, that's that, that's where Doug was concerned that. You know, there's microfilm from the eighties that we're relying on at this point to prove it was properly passed. Not that it wasn't, but if it came down into it, that's where we're at, is litigation over microfilm. To prove that it was properly passed.
Well, and we worked on our comprehensive plan for a year and came up with an agreement, a good com- comprehensive plan. And reado- and then adopted egg zoning, so legitimate zoning wall, so if we can certify that. Of course, we're gonna have, uh, we're gonna take another look at it after the first year. And that's fine, but I think what we have now should be legally and legitimately in place.
And that's pretty much exactly what we would be talking about, even if we didn't, even if Kent and I and our little list and I think. At one point Carolyn had sent me some, but even if we didn't make any changes to walls' current planning and zoning ordinance. If we just published it as the wall doesn't have one. So we would be starting over, just the same process that you do to pass an ordinance. We would be doing it again. To make sure that nobody can say it wasn't properly passed in the eighties before any of us were even around.
And 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 that wouldn't take a lot of time to do.
No, it takes the the same, exact same procedure and timeframe that any ordinance. Passage takes, the same publication requirements, every.
Then Black Hills, what the government, they will go through and kind of see what we've done and then they. They think there's something we should change or say it's good, they do that as well, right?
Yep, then then it would, those would be passed as amendments to the properly passed planning.
What is the timeframe of Black Hills Council or didn't you say, or you don't know?
Um, and they said it might be towards the end of the year before they can really.
Start working. So, okay, so this would be only if love's lost that we would have to have this concern?
No.
No.
As if anybody wants.
No, I, I think we need to be ahead of the court decision.
Okay, so and we we need to be ahead of that because this is gonna be a forever lawsuit?
No, no, not not that so much, Mary. There's something else might come down the road. We just wanna make sure that we have our eyes dotted and t's crossed. That everything is proper. Yeah, it's just.
It's not a, I don't think it's a big deal. I don't know why it's such a, yeah, it it's just to confirm that there's.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a prudent thing to do and and I mean, what would it take us, Carolyn, a month, month and a half?
You have to, um, I would bring it to the next council meeting, you would do a first reading. If you make any changes, though, you have to keep bringing it back for our first reading.
Any substantial changes, yeah.
But I I I I really think we should forge ahead on that and and it's prudent and it just. It just. Certifies what we have in place now and when we know after, probably after the first year, we're gonna look at our zoning ordinances again, that's fine. But at least what we have. But at least what we have now will be solid, if we can make it.
Correct.
Because we want to continue, just a dumb question here. Continue to stop development on that land out there or?
No, I don't, I have nothing to do with that, no.
It's to, to make it like Rick said, crossing the I's. Dotting the I's and crossing the T's, making it the way it's supposed to be. Stephanie saying it's not quite.
It would just, it's just. The love's litigation, um, has highlighted, um.
And not even, not even gloves, let's not even bring them up.
Well, and, and I'm not, but yeah, the, the love's litigation required us to go back in time. And it, it was a scant record, whether or not our, our zoning ordinance. Was properly noticed and everything, not saying it wasn't, but that's where we would get hung up next. If, if they challenged our entire zoning ordinance is. Was it properly passed in the eighties before any of us were even around, and now we're into microchip? So it's not love's, it could be Joe Blow, but if someone challenged our zoning ordinance. This prevents the challenge, it's, it's been properly passed in the twenty first century. Done, it's a black and white.
So what, what areas does this zoning ordinance cover? The whole community?
Cover the whole city.
Have you read?
I'm asking you what you specifically are trying to tell us tonight. Does it, and, but Stan has offered that it covers the total city, it is not. Land specific?
No.
It is the current zoning ordinance. So if you're familiar with what the current zoning ordinance covers, that is what it covers, it is the current zoning ordinance.
And it covers, it would cover wherever we have egg land.
But, but all, everything that the zoning.
All of it, all the other zoning ordinances.
Yeah.
We have, just so what if I, that they are done properly, right?
Yes.
And, and we spent over a year working on the comprehensive plan. And, and our former comprehensive plan was over forty years old, we practically couldn't prove it existed. And that's, and it's a big deal for the city to have a comprehensive plan. And now we have this new one that we worked on for a year, that's very solid, and I think we should move forward.
Yeah, it's basically due diligence.
Good thing to do.
Linda, cause yeah, this involves you a bunch.
Yeah. So I think in our comprehensive plan, weren't we supposed to review that every year? And then we approve it, are we coming up on that year of the comprehensive plan?
In September, it was.
No, so we got a couple things going on here with that, and. I think the sooner we do, the better, leaving it out there too long, pushing it off to the first of the year. To me, that almost feels like we're putting our head in the news.
Great, thank you.
So it's like, let's, if we wanna do it, let's do it then. And if we have to have planning and zoning needs, let me know what it is, I'll be there.
So every, every year would presumably say the comprehensive plan till it's good, we.
We reapprove.
That it's still happening, I would agree.
And, and, and of course, how it differs from the planning and zoning ordinance is it's not an ordinance. So it, it's just something that's supposed to, or the priorities of the community as they change the vault. The zoning ordinance is, if it's going to have any legal effect, it has to have been properly passed and then it's passed. And we can make changes to it, amend it, but if it's not properly passed, it's subject to.
And this will take you and Kent both working on this, or it's, this is your project?
I would definitely be speaking with Kent about it, he, he's special counsel specifically for this. Area of the city's needs.
Well, you. I don't think we're ready to make any decisions tonight, we're just gonna bring, bring us some information and we'll take a look at what you've got. And it's gonna take a lot of conversation then, I would assume from there, right? Okay, very good, anything else?
Uh, no, I, I'm not there, so am I to, um, move forward or not?
You said you were gonna try to look at the zoning and, and make some suggestions to what we have. Already in place, is that right?
I am, but that, that last paragraph sounded like we have to do a lot of talking before we're gonna give any direction.
No, before we approve anything, you're gonna bring us some. Uh, information on paper that we can review, tweak. Linda's really good at dots and I's and T's and we've gotta get all that done and so. Uh, that's, I guess what I'm asking you to do is. Start looking at those and bring us back something that we can get our hands on and get our eyes on, okay?
Good.
Anything else? All right, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So then that brings us to item twenty-two, uh. First of all, I wanna commend the Celebration Committee on a great celebration. Uh, the parade was awesome, I've heard tremendous response or comments on that. I appreciate Kelly's help and Jerry's help on, uh, the Council on Mayor. Uh, entry, the tech activities all went very well. The rodeo had excellent attendance, had PRCA of the year entertainers out there. And, uh, we did really, really well there, and Garrett and the public works, we really have to appreciate you. You spiffied up the town, you did significant logging to keep the mosquitoes. Uh, under control, and also your pre and post setup help was very much appreciated. Made a huge difference for the celebration. Uh, with that, uh. Tim tonight, uh, mentioned that the, uh, street committee did meet and do some Fourth Avenue pre-planning. Uh, with them in terms of how to accommodate the residents and the businesses along Fourth Avenue, kinda what the. Uh, timeframe might be, what that would look like in terms of. Uh, trying to reroute traffic and so forth, so I think we did, um, we've got that. Uh, kinda off the ground and we'll be looking forward to the kind of a bid that they bring back for us. And then, uh, the, uh, we did have a dental update, um. We have not heard, had anyone else, uh, contact us in terms of the dental space that we do have. Available, uh, as of August thirty-first. We did get a letter from, uh, the Trask family, uh, dental, and they. Clarified that they're not trying to, uh, desert their, um. Their patients here in Wall, but the space is not, uh, accommodating their needs anymore. And that if they could find another building, another office, another space here. They might consider moving in that direction, but it's basically the equipment and spaces available. So they wanted, uh, that to be clearly known. So with that, that completes my report, that moves us to item twenty-three, the finance officer.
Um, we had, um, comments about an area out in the cemetery. That I've shared some pictures with you guys and, um. This is how it looks on my, on the website, which is pretty much like it looks on my wall. But there's a couple of areas out there. That is right in line with where the directory is, if you're familiar with that area out of the cemetery. That there's quite a large, wider, open space that has never been developed with lots and. With a couple of areas of. Never known the right term, of, um, burials, I guess being out in that area. Um, it was kinda considered with committee that we may, maybe create. A row of lots down there, just to kinda clean that up. And the pictures that I shared with you shows the opposing, the opposite side of the road. Where the, um, American Legion Memorial thing is. You know, you're looking at maybe three feet from there to the road and the other side has maybe. I didn't measure it, but like maybe twenty feet. This would require, and if you have questions on the pictures that I shared with you, you can ask me and I can try to clear that up with you, but. This would require a, um, that DC Scott, the surveyor, to come out and get that marked off for us. And, um, the cemetery does have money, so they would be able to cover that. And I just think it would make things clear and less confusing in those areas, um. So that they don't think that they're approaching on people's lots out there. There was a new place, newly placed headstone that. Makes them think that they were approaching in their area, but they are not, and then that just brought the conversation forward and. Decided to maybe try looking at cleaning up that area by creating another line of lots. Does anybody have any comments to add to that, um, that was part of that committee? I don't know what this cost would be, but the, like I said, cemetery has.
Carolyn, where did you send the pictures?
In your pack.
It's in the pack.
Oh, it's in the pack, oh, cool.
They aren't named anything, they're just like a JPEG, I didn't wanna go through and try to name them, I didn't want. I could say cemetery picture one, cemetery picture two. So I just left them as default of the JPEG. But I was just marking that area to show you the area where the. Um, burials are sticking out and then where they should be in line back at those headstones, just to try and give you a. Visual of what I was explaining to you. And then, again, I shared these with you as well, so you could kinda see the area where they're. Approached out on that too, so there would be plenty of room to add one more row there. And it would not go beyond, um, the people that are out there, that's kinda their concern. But then, cause they kinda wanted to be on that outside area and didn't want other people to be on the west side of them and. That wouldn't happen, we would just clean that up so that we would have a whole straight line there. That makes sense?
Is, is my Aunt Mary Elizabeth Houston bottom, is her ledger in the wrong spot? There's a yellow line.
Oh, I only did that just to you could kinda see.
So what, so you're looking at that picture? There, so those, the other spots. Those markers should be on the underside. Of that line, so if you look down farther, there's headstones there, these should actually be back farther. So they're in line with the other ones farther down. So you kinda have, you have a row here and then you have some to stick out here.
No, I just, I don't know what, how, what I was referencing.
You, 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 you were just, I think on that, you were just marking the area, so that, so that yellow she has there, she's just indicating that you could put another row. There.
Oh, and I think you're looking at this one.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at.
So I just wanted, that was, cause the memorial or. You know, what do you call it, when you just put a name, wait, it's not a headstone.
Kinda, it kinda memorial.
Is it, do you call it memorial, just that, that would allow for. The full burial if they were back there, that's where they should be, back there instead of out, but they.
So that yellow line that she has there is where this should be.
Should be back there, but, uh, that's why they're out in.
Well, so are, are those, but, but that's like, that's Mary, Roz, Ted and Dorothy, are they out too far?
Yeah, all four of them are actually out too far.
And, and you know, and you, and you know. That family plot has those markers on the corners, so are they not accurate?
You know. For whatever reason, because there's another family, the Brian family that are out too, I, I guess I was just showing an example.
I'm not gonna have to reinterne all the Houston's and move it four feet.
Like to just create a new block, so then it doesn't look like those guys are all sticking out too far.
Just straight, I, Garrett and I went out there and, and I went out there, Pammy and Mike, Brian, and it would just. Kinda clean everything up, make everything in line, so how, how would that be done?
The surveyor guy would have.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I think we probably have an oversurveyed.
It is, you know, even though, and the cemetery, like I said, has their own money, but it is. Cemetery is under the city and you guys have to improve that kind of expenditure to move forward like them, so. I guess I would just like approval to. At least reach out to DC Scott and join the area and see what that cost might be, and I might. Just probably bring back more information at the next meeting, you know, and that kind of thing.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Wanted to explain.
You know, one of, one of the, I, I think the, the wall cemetery is beautifully maintained, great location. We, we really have a nice cemetery.
Any motion or?
I would like to, a motion to move forward, getting the surveying, you know, cost, to see what it would cost and stuff, so.
Absolutely.
You need a motion for that or a consensus to? You'd, you'd feel comfortable with the motion? Okay, Stan has moved to get the, uh, cemetery surveyed, is there a second? Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Now, that, I kinda thought of some other things that I wanted to speak about, so that's not on my list, even though it appears to be. So yes, we had a broken window, um, as you come around the corner of the building, the lower part was broken. And it's the outside pane, so we just covered it up with, um.
Cardboard.
Cardboard, so nobody's cutting it, cutting themselves. I did reach out to Hagan Glass, who actually put the windows in when the. Building was remodeled, so they had all the information that's needed. They gave me an estimated quote, of course, of the window five hundred and forty dollars. Um, plus tax, which we're taxable, but whatever, um. And then they came down and measured, and so that was an additional two hundred and ten dollars to come and measure for their money. So it's gonna be about seven hundred and fifty dollars. I did reach out to another company who. Asked me just to take pictures of it, and I'm kinda surprised they would try to get what. Kind of tinted was just through pictures, but anyway, their quote was quite a bit higher, they were gonna cost about twelve hundred dollars. So I think we should go with Hagan then, you know, it is like the amount that I can just do a purchase order and have Mary sign off on and stuff, so.
Can you, yeah, can I ask what happened to the window?
We have no.
No, just it came one day and it's broke.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did reach out to the insurance company and, um. They, cause I wasn't sure of our deductible, but they said it falls under the vandalism qua- clause. And, um, so it will be covered, I just need to give them the estimated cost and estimated cost and all that. And then, um. Stan had been in the office and had, cause we've had a lot of comments, um, the pedestrian crossing on Glen Street. In different areas, and he had commented that Spearfish had a pedestrian crossing system. And I reached out to them and I shared information in your packets to. Um, and then also the quote of that, that cost.
Yeah, I had a citizen say to me that he's about been hit twice and that crosswalk up there, people are, they just don't pay attention.
Yeah, and where's it at?
The one up by the motel, Welsh motel.
Over to the corner pantry?
Yeah, well, like, I was, yeah, yeah, kinda angles over to.
Yeah, that, I would think that'd be dangerous, I mean, just, cause I've been out there walking, you know, but it's just. I mean, just, cause I've been out there walking, you know, but it's just like cars are coming in pretty fast.
Yeah, Spearfish, they have a. Spearfish getting some work done on the vehicles there, lots of time, but uh, on their main street, it's on their main street, not on. busy street, but they're obviously trying to keep her traffic at five miles an hour and it's four, five blocks long. And they have crosswalks where there isn't lights and. They have big signs that are lit and then if, on pedestrian, I push it by a minute. And it links like a bus stop, that you need to stop, traffic needs to stop and pedestrians can walk across, so. I don't know, they probably cost a lot of money, but it would be, and, and even then when you don't push it, it's still brightly lit. When it's on both sides, I'm gonna go on and so I have no idea, but, and that's what would be expensive, I'm sure.
Twelve, around twelve thousand is what she indicated to me, um, and there is a link that you can go up to and kinda. Cause I just went out there that one time and kinda talked to her and she gave me the information on, I didn't know if that's what it looked like to you. Cause I didn't see it, of course, but you can look in your packet and maybe the street, you meet on it and you have further discussion or something.
Yeah. That is quite what Spearfish looked like, I'd be saying, but. I think like the street committee, my, my recommendation would be, obviously, anything we would try to do is too late for this year that we. Uh, we think some plan for next year and then.
My input's gonna be, if we're gonna put it there or if we're gonna put it that way.
Right, well, I'm, I'm thinking if you do it, you'd have to put them everywhere.
Yeah, and then, I mean.
If not, and probably more than, for that, impossible, but I think it would.
We also have the huge flashing stoplight, there's a stop sign that nobody stops at either, it is kinda. This is kinda frustrating. We could try it at one location, see if it has an impact. I, I mean, that would be one way to approach it.
Yeah, that one there is. The only way that I've made it work is you just kinda ease out there and hope somebody stops eventually and, and you're all right. You know, there's both sides of the boulevard and kinda the gas stations and.
And then you can, you know, we used to put the signs in the middle, but every semi and every motorhome and everything.
He turns a corner, runs over.
Drives over it, the day you put it up and there's seven hundred dollars fees.
Well, I think Stan's correct that something the street committee needs to have further discussion for, we've gotta talk about the humps. Too, and take a look at the budget and, and try to, but it is, I mean, we're past half summer now, so. It's gotta be a next year.
And I, I did have a citizen tell me that they would really be in favor of the. Bones to slow traffic down there too.
So maybe that.
They've been watching the meetings and they're really excited and were thinking about doing something like that. They might have been more excited about Rick actually thinking of the wall.
Mary, so when the street committee or, you know, they did the street study, sidewalk study. One of the suggestions was to have pumpouts, do you remember that? Is the city even considering that? Because I walk across that intersection to go to work in the morning, you know, seven fifteen. And it's not been too bad at seven fifteen in the morning, but there are times I've almost been get, walk across there.
And which, at the Welsh motel corner intersection?
Yeah, and.
This where you're walking?
Suggestion was those pumpouts would, you know, curve out into the street, which would shorten the distance between the sidewalks. Go across there. Is that anything the city's still considering?
That would be something the street committee there. Take a look at that.
I'm gonna go on vacation during storm removal at that time. Land around and just. These over here, like trying to do these, this parking lot is horrible. Sticks out, you know, but not that it wouldn't work, but I'm just saying.
And that would some, if it's on the boulevard side, the state would have to approve that.
Right.
On the Glen Street side, the state would have to prove that, okay? Say right beside Kelly Motel.
That would be, that's there, there, the highway's there and it meets with our Glen Street and. What is it, South Boulevard is the state, so that's what they're seeing. Kinda work together on that one.
Okay, anything else in Carolyn?
Um, well, I also included a letter from Wounded Knee, uh, you'll see that it's dated back in March, but I received it. He was mailing it to the physical address, which it didn't come, so then he remailed it and I just got it. July, so that's why you're just seeing it now, so, but I know it was intent, his intention was to share it with you, so I'm just. Gave it to you in your packet to review, and one other thing, I want to kinda raise out, but. Um, need to consider it because of plane tickets. Um, I learnt last night at school board of a meeting. For the NAFIS conference that I have not attended for quite some time and I would like to attend. And it's in September, I would coming, I would be coming back the day before. The Second City Council meeting and I could do some of the work while I'm gone. I just wanted to give you a heads up that as that time gets near, um. That meeting may not be as complete as it should be, but. Because of me being gone and I might miss some things, but just to bring your attention that the next meeting in October, which should be the fifth. That's when annual conferences, so we typically move that first meeting to the second, so I mean, we'd be. Ten days and have another meeting to catch anything. And so as we get closer to that time, I would be bringing that October second meeting forward to you to approve that change, so.
Say that again now, what would you change?
The October second meeting, or the October fifth meeting needs to be changed to October second because annual. And I'm just commenting that I would be coming back from that NAFIS conference on the twentieth. We have a scheduled meeting on the twenty-first. That with me being out of the office right before a meeting, there might be some things that gets missed on the agenda. You know, but I would catch it at the, because we'd be ten days with another, so I just wanna give you the heads up. I'll do my best to get everything on the agenda, but. Something might get missed, so. Just wanna bring that forward. And I'll bring it again for the change on the October second meeting, so.
And that annual meeting in that first week of October is in Rapid City?
It is.
So that would be open to all the council members and?
Yes, and I will be bringing that information when we start the registration process.
Right, anything else?
No, I, I went down for one item that I had, I'm sorry.
Okay, Public Works. Karen?
Well, we've been working on filling a few of the smaller potholes. But I've been talking with Dave Jevica and Western Construction and trying to figure out a way to take care of those bigger ones on. On uh, Fourth Avenue. It's gonna involve a little cutting, but I think it's probably something we can do, we just, just been talking to him, so we can take care of those. Of course, foggy mosquitoes. Um, and I also talked to Jevica. Um, about getting some gravel, I see they had some real gravel out there and they're gonna open up the Patterson. Down on the river and so I'll be coming probably to you guys just to get some, we're gonna crush it for us. Get any of that, it'll help with the roads and stuff, Gary's been working pretty hard on building stuff and. Getting them in the shape and we need to add a little here and there, so.
So, do we have a consensus for him to go ahead and get gravel then and?
Yeah, I'll come out, give prices, they're just now stripping the soil.
Okay.
To start.
Alright.
Out there, so, and they're gonna use it at the airport too, so it'll be soon.
Okay.
Other than that, just. Same as they all, pushing snow. I'd rather be pushing snow than having mosquitoes and sweating. Sweating or freezing. I'd rather free choices.
I don't, I don't know, it, cause a couple of nights you were doing that fogging and, like it seemed like all you did was make them angry.
Oh, I agree.
But then all of a sudden, I don't know, the timing was like perfect, yeah, because, I mean, they were biting hard at like seven in the morning.
Yeah.
And uh, then like celebration came around and it was weird, it just, I don't, I don't know if it's. Temperature or?
That one morning I went to the pool and you could see it was like. Black from all the mosquitoes that were dead on the concrete.
Hmm.
So. Soon as they're just about dried up, it rains again.
Forever.
Sometimes it rains while you're fogging.
Yeah.
But thank you for that effort, Gary, cause it's late at night, you're putting in long hours and we appreciate that. Okay, item twenty-five, any items for discussion, no action already taken? Okay, none? Okay, so the next uh, city council meeting will be August third at six thirty. And we do have a need for executive session.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Is there a second to that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Alright.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
See you later.
And I don't think they're, do we need Stephanie to stay? Can she be in the meeting?
No.
No, it's not one of those issues, so, thank you Stephanie.
Can you do fly spray, Garrett?
Okay, I will. I am going to call us out of executive session. Uh, is item number twenty-eight is other, does anyone have any other business that they would like to discuss? Or bring to the attention of the council tonight? Seeing none, do I have a meeting to adjourn? Dan's moved.
Sorry.
And Mike seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.